Okay, hello and good evening. It is March 22nd, 2021. This is the regularly scheduled Islam Meadow Public Schools School Committee meeting. Call the meeting to order 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. We have the full committee in attendance this evening. And our first order of business will be some minutes for approval. I could have a motion, please.
Move to approve the March 8th executive session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. Next.
Move to approve the March 8th, 2021 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Antonella. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries five to zero. Numero tres.
Move to approve the March 16th, 2021 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Beth. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. And one more.
Move to approve the March 16th, 2021 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Sarah. Second. Second by Bill. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero as well. Okay, at this point, we have an opportunity for visitors to address the committee. If there's anyone out there that would like to speak to the committee and is on the Zoom call, now would be the time to raise your hand. Seeing none, we will move on to committee and subcommittee communications. Beth, do you want to start us out tonight?
Do not have anything other than I'm looking forward to the kids coming back.
Two more weeks.
It'll be good. And a lot of kids are outside at the high school at least, learning. That's fantastic.
Sweet.
Yep.
Awesome. It's none, Nathan?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Sarah?
Nope, not tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, Bill. I'm good. All right. Awesome. Moving right along. We are going to speak about the proposed floating season for athletic fees. And also, we have information about the spring athletic season. Who do we have tonight?
So we should have Mr. McGee and Mr. Page and possibly Mr. Wright, either in the audience or as panelists. Doesn't look like they're there as panelists, but maybe Jamie can see it through in the audience.
Yeah, she is.
Yep, I just sent all three of them in.
Okay, great. Thank you. Where's Mr. McGee?
Hello, gentlemen.
Hello.
How we doing, guys?
All right.
Hello.
Who wants to start? Kevin?
Sure. So I'm talking about athletic fees. We're currently in the floating season, which is football, cheerleading, and indoor track, even though it's being done outdoors. So I am looking for the school committee to set a athletic fee for those three sports. As a point of comparison, from the fall season, all of our team sports in the fall, there was no transportation provided, and the school committee fee was $100 for those team sports. Cheerleading was a socially distanced activity in the fall. And their athletic fee was $50 from the fall. Another point of reference is from the winter, when we did basketball, ice hockey, swim team, and ski team. Their season was about 50% of what their normal season would be. But the big difference in the winter was the LPVAC provided transportation. So the school committee voted on an athletic fee of $125 in the winter. So this floating season with football, track, and cheerleading, the LPVAC is going to be providing transportation. Their seasons are going to be about 50% of what their normal competitions would be. So it is very similar to the winter season, which is why I'm suggesting $125 athletic fee for football and track. I'm also suggesting a $50 fee for cheerleading because they are not allowed to travel to any competitions. They wouldn't have any official charges to have people judging them in competitions, and they wouldn't have any transportation fees. So it is very similar to that season in the fall when they, when their athletic fee was $50. So those are my suggestions for those three sports. Moving along to the spring and just looking ahead to the spring, there's been a lot of changes in the past week. So in the spring, we are looking at doing baseball, softball, lacrosse, outdoor track, tennis, and boys volleyball. We're hoping to do wrestling for the spring seasons will probably be reduced by approximately 30%. So it would be a slightly larger season than the winter and the fall. The schedules will not be developed for another three weeks, but there will be a Western Mass tournament. And they did just decide in the last couple of days that there will also be a state tournament in the spring. ELHS will provide transportation, and the proposed athletic fee that I'm proposing is somewhere between $125 and $149 for those spring sports compared to the other seasons. So moving along from the athletic fee, if it's okay, I'd like to talk about what the spring season would look like or would the school committee would like to talk about the athletic fees for the floating season first.
Yeah, yeah, Kevin, let's get that out of the way. So we'll, we'll, we'll deal with the floating season first. Sure. Does anybody have questions on the floating season fees? Kevin, anything standing out so far this season? I know these are the sports that they, you know, we were more worried about. Are any schools seeing any issues so far, you know?
No, it's, it's been really smooth. Our football team had our first home game last Friday. It was a great win for them. The cheerleaders were there. The fans were excellent, social distancing. So it's been a great start to those seasons. Our first track meet is going to be this Friday. And it's been really a smooth transition into the season.
Is the meet home Friday, do you know?
Yes, it's a home meet on Friday versus Agawam.
Okay. And are we letting fans into these?
Yes. So currently, we're allowing two home spectators plus two siblings. So each athlete has been given spectator passes to share with their family. And we're documenting who comes in when they show their passes at the gate.
Okay. Any other questions?
That's good. I'm happy to see that you're letting more people in because...
Yeah, especially with outside. What about away fans? Not yet?
So there is definite potential for an expansion to fans. There's a PVIAC meeting on Wednesday, and there are some potential changes. And I'm hoping to be able to present something to the school committee in the next couple of weeks that would be supported by the PVIAC and by the state to expand fans even more.
Okay, great. All right. Good news. All right, so we're looking at $125 for indoor track and football and 50 for cheerleading?
All right. I move that we accept the fees of $125 for football, $125 for indoor track, and $50 for cheerleading for the floating season, which is between March 1st and April 25th.
Okay. Motion made by Beth.
Second.
Second by Antonella. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Okay, now let's look at this spring, please, Kevin.
Looking at the spring, Mr. Page is going to bring up a presentation to talk about the spring sports. So those spring sports are going to be baseball, softball, lacrosse, outdoor track, tennis, boys volleyball, and we're hoping wrestling. The spring season will begin on April 26th, and the regular season will be over by approximately June 15th. There will be a Western Mass tournament, and they just approved a state tournament. Teams that go deep into the tournament will finish the postseason play definitely by July 3rd and possibly sooner. Teams will have the opportunity to opt into the tournament. There will not be a qualifying standard for tournament play. Facial coverings will be worn at all times, excluding mask breaks while socially distanced. There will be limited spectators. The PVIAC recommendations will hopefully loosen up for a school committee vote in early April, like I talked about earlier. There will be limited use of locker rooms, and regular season games will be geographically assigned. So looking at each individual sport, all the spring sport modifications can be found at MIAA.net. Listed below are some of those notable modifications in baseball and softball. Team rosters for game day must be limited to 20 players on the bench. Players should refrain from huddling and mound visits. Must remain socially distanced. Dugouts will be extended to allow for social distancing. No seeds, gum, or spitting will be permitted in those sports. For tennis, there'll be different numbered tennis balls used on each court. Only one player will touch the scorecards. Coaches will exchange lineup cards electronically. In girls lacrosse, the pregame stick check procedure will be changed to random selection. The draw will be expedited by the official, and if a player moves after the draw has been set, then a free position will be awarded to the opposing team. Only one player per hash mark on the eight-meter setup for girls lacrosse. For boys lacrosse, the NCAA rules for the face-off will be adopted. Game day rosters will be limited to 45 players. All players will be required to social distance while on the sidelines. Moving on to outdoor track, designated areas for teams and mask breaks will be marked. All shared equipment will be properly sanitized. Athletes will only go to their starting areas when called. In boys indoor volleyball, game day rosters cannot exceed 15 players. Teams will remain on the same side of the court for the entire match, and the ball will be sanitized after every set in boys indoor volleyball. And wrestling has not been approved by the EEA or the MIAA yet. However, there will most likely be more guidance from them in mid-April. So that's what spring sports are looking like. We are hoping to get schedules in the next two to three weeks. And it's great news that there's going to be a Western Mass tournament in addition to a state tournament for the spring athletes who missed their entire season last year.
Okay. Kevin, I know in the girls volleyball season, we had the outdoor courts. Is that something we're looking into for the boys this season?
We can definitely do the outdoor courts again. But with basketball being so successful indoors and being able to socially distance and rosters being at 15 or less, we've done really well with the indoor activities. So I am hoping to do volleyball indoors. And if anybody's listening, our volleyball numbers are really low right now. So we're hoping that more boys volleyball players sign up so we can have a team.
Questions?
Can you just clarify what, what that bullet means? That teams will have the opportunity to opt into the tournament? So it's not based on seed or division? It's just your in or your out based on your own choice?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I believe the deadline is going to be June 1st. And schools and teams will be able to notify the tournament director if their team's going to participate in the tournament. And that was an important thing by the MIAA so that if a team has to quarantine and miss two weeks, and let's say they finished the season five and seven, they don't have a 500 record, they normally wouldn't qualify for the tournament. But to protect those teams, if they had to quarantine, that's the reason why teams will be able to opt in instead of going 500 during the season.
Okay. That, thank you. That clarification makes a lot of sense.
Mr. McGee, that would mean then competitions are going to be taking place, in some cases, back-to-back with the greater number of teams. Would that be accurate?
Um, so they do have a rough draft of what the tournament would look like. There would not, they would most likely play three games in a week, but they would try to avoid back-to-back games unless the weather didn't cooperate. But there is the potential for three games in a week for the, during the tournament play.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on that? What we're looking for would be approval for the spring season for the one, two, three, four, five, six, four, not including wrestling. We prefer to go by...
I just have one more question because this will be the most teams, if I'm looking back on our seasons, this will be the most teams that will have practicing on site. So before we had, when we had cross-country field hockey, golf, soccer, and volleyball, the golf didn't really practice here. So this will be the most teams that will be on campus practicing simultaneously while at the same time bringing kids back into the building. So in terms of staffing, are we feeling like we're comfortable with the number of coaches, the amount of student athletes, the amount of students that will be back on campus in terms of maintaining all those mitigation strategies? Because this will be way more numbers than what we've seen so far.
We would definitely schedule practices so that there is a window in between teams practicing. So for example, with tennis, if the girls tennis team practiced from 2:30 to 4:00, the boys wouldn't start right at 4:00. They would start at about 4:15. So there was windows in between practice times. It would be the same thing on the turf. If boys lacrosse practiced from 2:30 to 4:00, the girls lacrosse practice wouldn't start right at 4:00. There, there would be a window between practices to allow athletes to leave the facility, and then the next group would come in. And we would remind athletes to not come early to practice so that there's not multiple teams on each location. Our goal would be for only one team to be on each facility space at a time. They would completely clear the facility space, and then the next team would come on.
And I guess too, for Mr. Page, are there supports that he needs in place to ensure that the building is kind of clear at the end of the day too? So I know student athletes sometimes like to stay, and I totally understand that. Maybe get some homework done because there's that awkward gap time between when school's ending, and then maybe your practice isn't until 4:00. But is he feeling like he has enough staff to support him to be able to, you know, make sure the building is clear, and we don't have students lingering right now?
I think you should pay, just page is with us up there.
Yeah, so far, so far, we've been able to manage that really well with, with other seasons. Even with the expansion, in, in a few weeks, I think we'll be okay. We have added two after-school supervision staff members where they're, they're basically, you know, supervising any kids who do need to stay after, catch up on work. Those kids are signing in. We're using our large cafeterias that we'll call it like the holding tank in a sense. So like if kids do need to stay after, wait for a practice, get extra help, you know, wait for ride, whatever it might be, we do, we do have that on a daily basis right now, so.
So someone's monitoring that, Frank, the, the big cap, is a staff member there?
We have two people every day after school.
Oh, that's where they are.
From two to three, from two to three o'clock.
Yep.
You know, if we had, if we felt the need to extend that, I, I think we could have that conversation. But so far, it's worked out pretty well.
And then we had someone at the door in the fall in terms of monitoring who comes in and out, the locker rooms and such. We'll, we'll monitor that again.
Yes. So anytime the student athletes are using the locker rooms, the locker rooms are locked unless a coach is unlocking the door and monitor, monitoring who goes in and out.
Okay. Okay, so just one, you've got a proposed athletic fee between $125 and $149. You have a recommendation for us?
My recommendation would be $125. I can't guarantee that their season is going to be that much longer than the other seasons. My hope is that the spring season will be more than 50%, but the schedules haven't come out yet. So my recommendation would be $125.
I like that because it's consistent with everything else that we've done.
It is.
Yeah, the consistency is important.
Yeah, and then next year, we look to return our sports fees once we're all back to normal. It's coming. Yeah. Okay. We'll take a motion to approve the spring season, including those sports of the boys volleyball.
Move to approve the spring season for baseball, softball, lacrosse, outdoor track, tennis, and boys volleyball with an athletic fee of $125, and the season runs from April 26th through June 30th.
Great.
A second.
Motion made by Bill, second, and by Beth. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries five to zero. All right.
I was wondering if I could ask Mr. Page something. I know you guys are having possibly a pep rally. And I know that you're probably going to do it out of the rooms, and I understand you've got kids at home. But I'd love it if you guys not, like you don't have enough to do on your part. If we could get all those kids in the football field and stream it live to the kids at home, I know your students would really appreciate it. So I'm just throwing that out there as a thought.
So I will say right now, obviously, because we have 500 kids, it's tough to put them under one location. The video, the pep rally is, is being scheduled as a virtual. It's also more of a video than it is a live stream. They're putting together like a 15-minute video for us to run during Spartan Block on that Friday before April break. I think as we move into the spring, though, we can definitely find ways to get the kids, you know, more connected.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, so we're good on the athletics. Thank you, Mr. McGee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Frank and Gary are sticking with us? Are they sticking with us?
And we may have other leadership team members in the audience.
Yeah, so if any leadership members are out there, if they could raise their hands, and we will discuss an update on the ELPS transition to the new learning model. You want to start us off?
Okay. All right. So we wanted to provide you some information of where we are in this third transition. And this is our largest transition in terms of an instructional model. As you know, we've gone from being predominantly remote to more of a hybrid situation that's going on currently. And we're moving into families being able to choose to come in full in person every day for the rest of the school year. And there's a lot of preparation that goes with that. We, I think, as we go around the buildings, we'll see that we're, we're probably higher than, say, 75% across the buildings. I'm not sure about the high school, but definitely in the elementaries. And today is, hopefully, families are able to get their choice into all the schools so we can finalize those numbers. But what we have been doing is making sure that we're prepared to transition into this model. So that means that we've routed roughly just under 900 students who are going to take advantage of bus transportation. Will be sent, we sent out bus passes last week. As those families receive their bus passes, we'll be finalizing lists and sending that all to the LPVAC so that they have the new list for the bus routes. And then that gives them this week and next week to prepare. And because now stops have changed, given the fact that you have more riders.
Were we able to accommodate everybody?
Everybody who's shown interest, we've been able to put on a bus with the idea that you may be paired with another student as we start to assign seats. However, we've also gotten from families, you know, that they want their children, if they're on the same tier, say, a Berksland and a high school route, sitting together or relatives. So we're trying to coordinate that. And what we've been doing is, as we put the information for a given bus route into the system, we're putting it into the driver's notes. Because right now, the LPVAC has been creating the seating charts for us and sending them to us. There's a little bit of a reversal in terms of just emphasizing that, hey, this is what our families have requested. And so in your seating chart, please recognize that, and that will be in the driver's notes section. But we have, to answer your original question, we have been able to get everyone who's shown interest. I think the schools not only are starting prepared, but they've gotten all their purchase orders. I know that Mrs. Blair can probably speak to some of the specifics around purchase orders. But we've ordered and procured tents that will be set up for this spring, and possibly we will maintain them all the way into the fall so that we can utilize outdoor spaces whenever possible. The high school has purchased some furniture that will be able to be used in the courtyards and set up a few outdoor classroom spaces. And it's furniture that we can use and move into a potential new building so it can come with us.
There you go.
Which is pretty exciting. And we have, in some cases, ordered individual elementary desks just to make sure that we have enough individual desks in our classrooms and that we're preparing to space those out accordingly. You do have Mr. Page on screen. Maybe he can start us off in terms of just adding anything to high schools prep to, to this point.
Yeah. Excuse me. I have no problem talking quickly. So right now, we have between the cohort A, B, and D students, there's about 405 kids in that group. We've had about another 140 opt-in, so we're looking right around 540 kids, which puts us around 65% of our student population. You know, so I think that's awesome. I think that's by far, you know, combined, the, the highest number that we've had opt-in so far. In terms of preparation, this past weekend, this past weekend, we had all the custodians at the school starting to add desks to the classrooms, even though I know families have it through, through tonight to make that final decision. We've already started pushing those desks in just so we can start getting prepared. You know, so we're basically, in order to maximize the space, figure out what is the, the max number of students a teacher has in each class and matching that with the number of desks that we're putting into each room. So we're being strategic about it. It's not like every room gets 20. You know, one room might have 17, one might have 15. The reason we're doing that is because we also need the desks for lunchtime, and we need approximately 150 desks down in the large cafeteria, small cafeteria, and small gym in order to meet the needs for lunch as well. So, you know, we're chipping away, we're playing, and we're getting ready. But it's pretty exciting. We're also, I know all you members of the school committee and in our Islam Meadow High School community, got that email that I sent out on Friday. Talk a little bit about the campus beautification project. We also want to create all these, as, you know, Mr. Smith spoke about, we want to create these outdoor spaces around campus. So when we get into the spring and we get these nicer months that we can, that we can get kids outside and staff outside and really just create a really warm and welcoming environment throughout the rest of the school year.
Thanks, Mr. Page. Do we have, there's the leadership team?
We do. Do you want to go to Berksland next?
Yeah, might as well.
Tim and Connor are both here.
Okay. Dr. Allen and Mr. Martin, are you?
Yeah, hello, everybody. So we are at 78% coming full in person, which is just over 450 students. So 22% as of right now still full remote, but they've got a few more hours. So I got an email while we were on this Zoom with another addition. So, um, yeah, we're very excited. I, you know, we have been ordering, um, like, like Pam mentioned, and we've, we've got four tents coming to Berksland's. We're going to use those for lunches whenever possible, as well as, especially to start to have some bands and strings orchestra take place outside. It'll be a lot easier for that. We can't really use those for classes as much as I would like because it'll be out, they'll be off the internet. So the students that were at home, it wouldn't work that way. So, but we'll use the outdoor spaces in the tents as much as possible. And then we also bought a bunch of benches slash tables for our courtyard, which will be used for classes because when they're in our, we have a beautiful courtyard, and when they're, when students are in it, they're still on the wifi as our teachers. So that's going well. And, you know, I'll, I'll be honest, like, it really starts tomorrow. I have five meetings with all staff members tomorrow because we needed to get the final numbers to get down to the nitty-gritty. So we'll be moving a lot of desks, like Frank was saying. Moving a lot of tables. We're going to rebuild our cafeteria. We're going to give the gym back to the gym teachers. We're going to use a couple of different spaces to make sure that we can fit everybody at lunchtime. But we're excited, and, you know, we're on top of it. And after we meet with teachers and counselors and paras tomorrow, the real nitty-gritty planning begins. Or let me say, the real nitty-gritty implementing begins.
To Dr. Allen's point about planning, that's, you know, beginning tomorrow, when we finalize numbers, then we'll be able to, and I was, I was remiss in not saying this before when we were talking about the transition, we'll still have students, obviously, who have selected to remain remote. And so they'll still be able to connect and live stream to the class. And so we have to work out that balance, and that's going to be part of the transition. But we're looking to give them as robust an experience as we've done, not only in hybrid, but before when we were put on a remote.
Can you get our wifi out to those tents for the man?
We can get some wireless access points maybe on the tents. See what we can do.
That'd be nice.
Thank you, Dr. Allen.
Yeah.
Mrs. Antonello or?
We do have both. We'll go with Mrs. Antonello.
Sure. Hi.
Hi, Elaine.
Hi. Well, I, we filmed a video last week. I can't remember.
Last week, yeah.
Gone, but I haven't watched it because I don't like to watch myself on video. So hopefully, it was helpful to people.
Mrs. Antonello, let me just say, you are a star in the making.
Oh, really?
Yes. Nice, nice work.
Thank you.
You and Mrs. Bruleo both.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Mrs. Thompson, I got cut.
We made the walk-in. We had the same hand sanitizer.
Yes, you did. You did.
Same deal appearance. There you go.
I have, I didn't do the percentages, but I only have 17 students in the whole school that are staying remote. So I have five in grade three, six in grade four, and six in grade five. And actually, I think I did it a little bit differently with my communication. I asked all of my recurrent remote students to let me know one way or the other. And I actually didn't hear from three people. So if I hear from them tonight, then of course I would add them, and that would bring our number down. But our total is 17 remote in the school. I'm trying to think of things that you wouldn't have seen in the video. I do have three tents coming also. I didn't think about the remote access points with... I didn't think about the remote access points with internet. So I don't know that we'd be able to have a class out there. But we can use it for lunch and, you know, other activities during the day. I also thank you Pam and Gordon for the materials that some of the teachers requested for the rooms. I did order on my own some picnic tables for my little courtyard, which is outside of my office and the front door for the staff because currently my staff have either been eating in their cars or in the cafeteria. But now that I'll be using the caf, they won't be able to have that option. So I did order some picnic tables for them for outside. My rooms are all set up. We actually should be able to take some desks out because of the students that have decided to stay home. And the caf, as you saw in the video, is set up with the regular caf tables along with twelve folding tables that we already had in the building. So we'll be able to have forty-eight students in the caf at a time. I think, I, oh, I am having a very quick parent information night on Thursday, which will basically be a lot of the information I talked about in January at my parent night. But also, if there's any questions, especially for the students who will remain remote, I'll be able to answer them. It's obviously on Zoom. I'm not doing it live. But there was a link sent out to the parents on Blooms. So I think that's it, unless you have any questions.
Elaine, with your numbers, do you have classrooms with all the students in?
Yes, I have. I have several. Unfortunately, some of the rooms have only one student. Which will be difficult for the teacher who's teaching the kids in person. I did try to communicate to the parents that, you know, with that many students back in person, it will be difficult for us to have the kids. We want to get the kids off the screens as much as possible. So although the kids at home will be able to hear and see the classroom, the teacher and the students may not be on camera the entire day because of the fact that if all, if, you know, there could only be one student in the room that's decided to stay home. So they'll definitely hear and see and be provided with all the materials that all the kids in person have. We've been doing that the entire time. We have a table set up outside the main door if teachers have things that parents need to pick up. And Sheila or I go and give them to the parents.
And then the classes.
Experience, though, for the remote kids, if it's a room that only has one student at home.
Right. The classes that have all the students in, then they won't, they won't be on a Google meets or Zoom at all, correct?
No.
Already be back to normal almost.
Yes.
Great.
I have, I want to say two to three rooms at every grade level that have a full.
That just made me think of a question. Now, if a student does go out because they need to be quarantined or whatever, we can get those teachers back on.
So even with one student, we're still going to be having that student connect and livestream in. If there's a more creative solution that we can come up with with families, we will try that. But right now, we're still connecting to the classroom. And so as Mrs. Antonello said, it may be more interaction between the teacher and that student than necessarily, you know, the entire class popping up computers. However, as she also said, you know, there may be interaction at different times. So if they break out into groups, we could probably pull that student into a virtual group, with, say, two other students who are in person.
I was just making sure that if, like, you have a classroom that's full in, and then one of those kids, maybe there's a situation, they have to stay home. Not for regular illness, but for COVID, they might be out.
So if people are quarantining, we would still be basically responding the way we're responding now.
I did say that in the announcement to parents, that if it was quarantine or if the student wasn't feeling well enough to participate virtually, they could. But like you said, not for other absent reasons.
So Elaine, you bring up a good point. And now I wonder if the other two principals could touch on it, Tim and Frank, about, I know it's been somewhat of an issue when students are hybrid and they come in and then they decide not to come in on their coming in week. And so attendance can be scattered. Are we changing how we take attendance, how we mark students absent in a full in model?
So we, oh, go ahead, Frank.
Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, that's right. I do have seniority, right?
That's right. I'm taller. Enjoying this virtual space, I see.
Remember.
So, yeah, well, we'll still be doing it similar to how we are now, which is we'll have in-person presence and we'll have remote presence. And then we'll just have full-on absent. So if a student is supposed to be in person, but for a quarantine reason or something like that, they're, they're instead logged on online, then they would be marked remote presence rather than in-person present. So pretty similar to how it is now, actually.
Right. But if they're supposed to be in, Tim, and they, and it's not a COVID-related quarantine or isolation, they can't just choose to not come in and then be marked present? Or how are we doing that?
So this is one of those details that I'll be working out with my staff starting to. But, yeah, I, there's, there's certainly at the middle school going to be a balance. I do not want to spend a lot of class time kicking kids out of Google meets that are at least engaging somehow with their education. But at the same time, if they're supposed to be in person and suddenly they seem to be showing up online more often than, than in person, then we're going to be reaching out to that family and either changing their cohort or figuring out what's going on. But it's not going to be at the beginning of every class, I, I figure out where you're supposed to be. And if you're in the wrong place, you're out of here kind of thing. We, any, in this year, in the worst year ever to be a kid, any educational engagement is a good thing.
Sure.
Yeah. And to echo exactly what Dr. Allen was saying, we're taking a similar approach. Obviously, if a kid engages in the remote meet, we're not going to be removing them. But one of the things we are doing, especially when we get to April 12th, when we obviously ramp up our in-person learning, we've been tracking, we've been tracking trends of kids who are supposed to be in person and then on a regular basis engage remotely. And, and obviously, for the kids who want to be in the building, you know, we want to make sure that they have the optimal learning environment. So if a kid is, you know, demonstrating those trends of being remote and is detracting from what the teacher's trying to do, because they're trying to figure out who's supposed to be there, who's supposed to be remote. We are, one, starting with our secretaries to make those calls and finding out what's going on with the attendance. And then, two, if we really see those trends, you know, one of the administrators is working with the family to find out whether they should be in that in-person cohort or the remote cohort.
I think it's a little different for the elementary students. The parents have, you know, made the decision about sending them in or not. And I have announced to the parents that, according to the state guidelines, it says, of course, we would provide remote learning to students who are in quarantine or who are out due to COVID reasons. But in other cases, we would expect the students to be in school if it was a regular year. And now that they've chosen in person, we would like them to be in school. I think it's different at the elementary level than at the middle and high school.
I think the common theme, though, running through the whole thing is communication.
Right.
You know, that we need our families to communicate with us, and we need to communicate with our families. You know, if someone's out and it's not a COVID situation, our hope would be that the family connects with us and we understand why that student may be out. And if that doesn't happen, as you've heard a couple of people say, we'll outreach the family and find out what's going on.
And Frank, does sports have any influence on that as well?
Yeah, we still have the no school, no play policy. So kids are expected to be engaged in every class. So we haven't gone to the level of if they're supposed to be in person, they engage remotely, they don't play. We haven't had that. We haven't started making that a policy. But, you know, the kids are expected to engage in every class in order to be able to participate in athletics in the afternoon.
You have Mr. Fredette and Ms. Slowie.
Excuse me. So Elaine touched on most all the points for elementary and the supplies, the furniture, the tents, the process, the procedures. We went through attendance a little bit, so that was good. I, I think the one thing from Maple Shade that, that I'm really excited for, and we are as well, are the number of students that are coming back in person. When we kicked off our hybrid model, we were at about thirty-five percent or even lower than that opting into hybrid. So now we're at about eighty-five percent opting in to the full in-person program for April 5th. So I still have about thirty students opting out. But having, you know, eighty-five percent of our students opting in is really great. And I know that Greg asked if we had any classes that have every student returning, and we do have a couple. So that's, that's really, that's really great as well. Those, those experiences will be a lot of fun.
Thank you. I think Ms. Slowie's.
Yep, there. So last but not least, I think most of what I would have said has already been said. We have ordered a lot of materials, laundry baskets for the kids' belongings and things of that nature. We did opt-in for one tent. We didn't go much further than that because of the wifi issue. Our wifi is sometimes spotty within the building. So once you get outside the walls of the building, that becomes even more challenging. So having classrooms where kids are live streaming in, being held outside, presents a pretty unique challenge. We'll be using our tent mostly for things like snack or some of the classes that do have full in because we do have many that are full in. I think my numbers are pretty on par with where Elaine is at. We're double the size of her school. And we're about double the amount that are staying home. So we have forty-two families opting to keep their kids remote. I do think I'm probably going to hear from a few of those tonight. We are at four hundred and twenty-three kids in person, and that's a ninety-one percent return to school rate with a number of classrooms at full return. We're, like Tim is, we've been waiting on these final numbers in order to do those last more intricate details of the planning. We have a general outline for lunch where we're going to be allowing some students to remain in the room, while others will be kind of brought down to the cafeteria to use some of the space there, which we've set up with a combination of tables and desks in order to maximize the space. Looks like we can fit about fifty-one students in there. Once we get those final numbers by tomorrow morning, I will know whether or not we need to use even the secondary overflow space. And if we do, that will be half of the gym. There is a possibility that in at least one lunch period, we may need to utilize the gym as well. We're also waiting on our final bus numbers and how many kiddos we got on the bus. I'm really hoping it was a fair amount of kids that opted in because our car line is pretty amazingly huge. If anybody's sat in it recently. And we've been getting done just in the nick of time with half the kids there. So we have a couple of ideas for how we're going to make that work if the number doubles, but I'm hoping it doesn't. I hope we've got some bus riders going that'll help alleviate some of that.
We should have more bus riders, I would think. Well, I know that we had eighty-two kindergartners sign up. So we're thinking about, you know, how do we provide some more information for those families? Because this will be their first bus ride to school.
Yeah.
It's happening in March, but.
March, not September.
It will be April at that point. Yeah, so. So we're trying to keep it at two per seat. And I think we've been able to accomplish that. But according to the DESI guidance, they've lifted the cap that you can place on a bus. Which I guess in some cases could go to three to a seat, say, with an elementary bus, but we're not. We've had some large elementary bus runs.
I remember those days.
And so we've had, yeah, we've had, as we get closer to the school, you may see three in a seat as they're pulling in, you know, hitting their final stops. So I think we also have Dr. Welsh with us. And she's putting some final touches to the theme that seems to be going through everyone's presentation, continues to be communication. And so Dr. Welsh and her staff have been connecting with families and working with our team facilitators just to prepare and make sure that, in many cases, students who have been coming every day are still feeling that their program's going to be robust and they're confident, you know, even with this expansion of students coming in.
Dr. Welsh, did you want to add? Please.
Just a few things. Thanks so much, Mr. Thompson. First of all, I think we're probably going to have our own little flurry of March Madness and student services just with all of the different constituencies kind of coming together to make this work. The principals, as you've heard, have done an outstanding job throughout the year making sure that as many students with IEPs as possible have been in their buildings and getting services. You know, I work with, I work very closely with Mrs. LaBumbard and with the school nurses who, again, have just really outdone themselves in terms of keeping all of the contact tracing straight and making sure that our buildings are safe. And lastly, Becky Becker in Transportation has, you know, done an admirable job of kind of going with the flow. So I have every reason to be optimistic about the next phase, which is bringing more students back into the buildings and continuing to receive the services that they've been getting. A couple of things that might be a little bit different. We will be increasing the presence of some of the providers who work outside the district. They will start to come into our buildings. So things like behavior analysts, people who provide individual counseling. We do have some related service providers as well. Many of them have been working remotely and will start to work in person. And I think that that's, that's going to be very favorable. Opening things up a little bit is going to allow us to maintain some of our individual students programs who have community-based programs and things like that, which at this point has been, you know, depending upon what each, what each student's family has opted for them. And then the last piece I just want to mention, well, actually two. One of the last pieces is we have, you know, a significant number of students in our district who attend private special education schools. And so in addition to kind of balancing our five schools, we've had to balance probably fifteen private schools and what their schedules have been for hybrid and remote learning. And again, hats off to Becky for kind of keeping that all straight. With public schools returning to more in-person learning, I've noted that a lot of the private schools that our students are attending through the IEP process have expanded as well. So I see this movement in general as being favorable for all of our students in Eastling Meadow, not only the students that are in our five schools. And then the last piece is the next thing that we'll be getting ready with, ready for. It's a little premature to be talking about it, but we'll be looking at our extended school year and how those services will be expanded a little bit just due to the unique circumstances of the last two school years. We want to be sure that we're accounting for as many students as we can in those situations. Don't have a lot more to say. Our program will run as it always does for six weeks. It'll be in four of our schools this year because I understand there's going to be some construction at Maple Shade. So that's going to be the next big, the next big job to get done in terms of creating an expanded, extended school year.
Yeah, Dr. Welsh, I appreciate you bringing up the extended school year. We, I certainly, and I'm sure my colleagues have heard from families about interest in that, specifically as you spoke of the last two years and the difficulties some of us are having. So potentially, as you move forward and, you know, certainly with Heather and Gordon as well, if we could maybe bring it back at a further time and talk about it a little bit more and get some more details as we get closer.
So I think you have two, two concepts going on. We have the extended school year that would be something that is provided for students on IEPs. But we are also starting discussions about how can we offer to all families the possibility of doing some academic work over the summer, but also combining with maybe some outdoor activities and so forth to keep it a little bit more of a fun-filled day and more of a summer feel. And so we're. Uh and so we're looking at that. We don't have those. We can bring, certainly bring those back. I think Dr. Welch though is, is tweaking some of the um summer school program that we've offered in the past to our special education students um and adding to it. So certainly we can bring that back too if you like.
And I just wanna mention, Mr. Thompson, we, we actually did that last year as well, um as far as extended school years. Through the IEP team process, we um expanded our weekly offer, our weekly services by one day. Typically, we run four days. We increased them to five and we added a week to the calendar as well. So it was a longer um summer program last year and we're, and we're, you know, we're gonna make sure that um we, we respect and we honor kind of the year that our students have had as we move forward planning um for the summer. Can't give you a lot more, you know, than that, but, but I will be able to at some point.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate Gordon, the distinction between the two, but certainly um as we move forward, if we can start to focus on that. I know, you know, we're already looking on the next thing and I apologize for that. But I, you know, there's a want for it and uh if we could start talking about it, working on it.
And I think as Dr. Welch has mentioned, I mean, this is such a unique year or unique two years that it's changed everything really, you know, and so we'll talk a little bit more about that as we talk about revised action steps.
That's also possibly one of the positive items to come out of something such as this. So we're able to look and see what structures um we might wanna put in place, not just because a result of what happens, but because it's what's best for kids.
Sure.
And how we can offer different opportunities for summer engagement beyond students um on IEPs. But to think about what are some of those other additional means around social emotional work or, you know, smaller, smaller gaps that maybe we shore up over the summer. We're setting our students up for greater success from the fall. So I think that's terrific and I'd love to know more about those.
Well, now, these are not mandatory. They're like opt-in kind of thing.
Yeah. They'd be similar to, I think, um you've seen, at least in one of the budget discussions, summer academies or vacation academies, that kind of thing. And so I know that um the middle school is working on something. I believe the high school is working on something and we're gonna try to coordinate. Dr. Welsh obviously is working on her summer school program um for students on IEPs. And then we're looking, how do we coordinate maybe the three elementaries and figure a way to offer some both academic pieces as well as um fun pieces uh combined. We'd like to say that, especially with uh April fifth and April twelfth, students coming back, that all learning is fun. But we understand that uh summer has a different feel for students. And so we have to take that into account as we put programs together.
Okay, anything else on this subject? Certainly, uh to the complete leadership team, thank you all. You know, we, we are all aware that we're asking again for another transition uh for our students and we know the planning that goes involved, is involved with it. And also please convey to the staff that we're with them as well and we appreciate all the work that they've done. Uh you know, we spoke about the uniqueness of the year. Uh and uh again, we're asking them to, to make a change in the learning model and we know that they'll meet the, the challenge. But it's, it's an awful lot of work and we certainly recognize and appreciate it. So please pass it along.
Yeah, and thank you for mentioning that because our staff has been exceptional. Now, this is a third transition. I would say this is probably the largest transition uh and our numbers are finalizing today. And so we're putting it together. We'll be ready.
How is staff morale? Anybody wanna chime in on that? How the building's doing?
I can say that at Burson Park, um, you know, the staff morale is really positive in all honesty. The vaccines getting moved up has helped a lot. Our PTO um worked tirelessly with our staff to get everybody a vaccination appointment that wanted one, which was absolutely amazing. And I just think that since people started getting the vaccination, it's just eased the anxiety just enough. And it's also just a matter of doing it, right? So it was, once they, once we started doing hybrid, we were just more comfortable doing hybrid. It's hard to talk about these things. It's easier to do them and, and get used to them. So uh but overall, I can say it, you don't walk around at school and feel like the sky is falling, like it's sort of like we're in month thirteen of never knowing exactly what's next and always needing to think about health and safety first. And everybody's working hard, working through it, working together, and I couldn't be more proud of them.
Good to hear.
Yeah, I can, if I just chime in quickly at the high school, I think our staff, they're excited to have more kids back. And um, you know, I, I think they're just ready. So uh I'll just, I'll leave it at that. I think they're, they're excited to have more kids in the building and get back to a little bit of normalcy.
And hopefully the weather continues to cooperate so we can keep some windows open, uh get some nice breeze going through the buildings. Starting to feel like spring a little bit. Looks good, yeah. Okay, any other questions for the leadership team? We're good?
Shout out, I'm sorry. I asked the DPW, we had um several screens in our building missing on the windows. I'm not sure where they went, but um I had one window in every classroom without a screen. And I asked Joe Dunn about a week and a half or two weeks ago if I could get new ones and they're already all installed. They built them and installed them. So that every window now in every classroom will open with a screen. So thank you to the DPW for that.
Without saying too much, I'm gonna second that. DPW has been awesome and responsive to everything we've requested in the last few months and getting, getting us ready for a return. So we put in some requests, some of them are pretty big, and there is one where we put a request in at three o'clock. They're at the school at seven AM with eight guys working. So they've been awesome.
Yeah, certainly DPW IT staff has stepped up for us, I know that, and uh health department staff. You know, I, I neglected to mention them when we met with the um, with, with the town council, Amy and, and her group. But certainly they have, and she has done a lot of work uh to get us all where we're at. So thank you for, for mentioning that. Okay, so.
I, I was not keeping them. They may stick around. Um but this was more of sort of a district view.
Okay, awesome. All right, well, uh leadership team, thank you so very much for attending. Uh good luck in the next couple of weeks. Please let us know if there's anything we can do or for the staff. Uh we're here. So uh thank you so much for attending tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Uh Mrs. Brown doesn't get that same opportunity to exit.
Check out.
She's already sharing the screen.
Okay, we'll move on then. Uh we're gonna talk about ELPS revised action steps to the SMART goals.
So as you know, um we were just talking about this, our third transition and, and really the underlying goal for all of us has been to keep our educational programs running, um our families engaged and connected. And keep all in the school community or the ELPS community safe as we do so in um this very unique year. So our SMART goals haven't changed immensely unless you, um, so I, I, I think you know what SMART goals are, which is the second slide. So um I won't uh frustrate Dr. Allen by going through each of the letters uh for what a SMART goal is, but you see it on the screen. Um and our district mission and our theory of action have not changed. We are looking to make sure that our students, as they go through pre-K through twelve, possibly in the Eastland Public Schools, that they leave us with twenty-first century skills um and that they have the ability to effectively communicate and work collaboratively, think critically and problem solve. That takes us to um really what I think this year is all about. You know, is, is looking at the whole child and Mrs. Trullio mentioned it earlier that a lot of our work is, yes, it's always academic, but we have to. And the research is showing us more how much um social and emotional uh elements are integral to students achieving to their highest level. And so those are something, those are things that we can never negate. And this year especially, where we've had separation of sorts for now over twelve months with some of our students um not being in the building. So that goal remains the same. However, one of the things that we really wanna look at as we go through this year and, and at the end of the year is that we have ninety percent or higher of our students reporting on our Panorama surveys that they're feeling their community and their classrooms are supportive and conducive to learning. That our staff is reporting at ninety percent or higher, the same thing. And one of the things that we've been monitoring um last few years is absenteeism. Uh and so we'd like to see, we had, you know, we had great attendance during our predominantly remote phase. We have some unique attendance um during the hybrid. It's still been high. But as a few people have mentioned, students that um may have, it may have been their in-person week. Some have decided on the secondary level that uh maybe they're still gonna connect remotely that day. So it's a little bit of a different type of attendance and we're gonna be working with that with our families as we go through. Currently, from the district standpoint, um we're at about four point two percent. So hopefully we can continue to keep that under five percent. And some of our schools are far below five percent, you know, in the two percent or three percent range. But we're at four point two percent as a district. As we move on to the next slide, just some of our key action steps. A lot of this, um you've started to see as we've gone through the um months since September. You know that we've had um an equity audit. Uh we've presented uh the findings from that equity audit and we're starting to use um the different recommendations to hopefully put together action steps that will not only start to happen this spring, but hopefully carry forward into the new school year. And so that's something that um we'll be looking to do this spring. And we do have a professional development coming up, I believe, for Mrs. Marjorie Boucher and Mrs. Trullio, as well as some of our administrators who have not been on the um steering committee for the last two years. And so we wanna make sure that everybody's fully understanding um not only how the audit took place, but what do some of these recommendations mean. Uh and so that's, that is driving some of the work um that we're doing. And to a certain extent, we've already done in terms of some of the things we've done this year. The other tool that's been incredibly helpful is Panorama. Uh it's starting, finally, we have something that's pulling from our student information system um and also grades and so forth. So schools and at the district level can look at a number of data points and start to think not just reactively, but hopefully proactively, you know, if they start, starting to see, hey, we're, we're having a situation here where a lot of our ninth graders seem to be going, say, down in a particular course. If that's something that we can catch early, not when we're already failing, but with a downward slide, that would be something where we can start to put some um remedies hopefully and solutions in place.
Gordon, sorry to interrupt, but with that in mind, what you just described, is it possible with Panorama for, for instance, the exiting um eighth graders' data to travel automatically to the incoming ninth grade since they're switching buildings? So thinking about those transition years and trends that may have been apparent to eighth grade advisors. Like, does that data all feed so that the ninth grade team can look at that?
That's the beauty of it. Yes, all of that information, uh you know, intervention information. So it's going to be a lot easier for folks to kind of understand kids from pre-K all the way through high school.
Perfect, especially thinking about those transition years now with all that's been going on over the past year. Um being able to really think about what kids need put in place before they even arrive onto a new campus, that that data would be critical in order to kind of establish that, so that they're hitting the ground running next year.
And the fact that it's, it's all able to be, as I think Mrs. Brown just said, in one place. Having participated in these type of transition meetings, to have all of that information is, is pretty incredible. And I'm sure you've participated in some of these meetings as you're gaining eighth graders and the ninth graders. And it's not easy. There's always, you're always trying to pull from various, but that panorama's been very good and we're getting more training on it. Uh moving on to the next um action steps. Uh we continue to work with the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity. And specifically what they're trying to help us do this year is build the skillset of our MTSS team. Um and help all of us on the district level, excuse me, have a better understanding of how this group and this structure can move from sort of a reactive mode to a proactive mode. Um and that's taken some time. We've had six sessions to date. But I'd say even today, in the breakout groups, we're trying to figure out, okay, what exactly is translating from district to X school? And how is that working for you? And so we're working through sort of perceptions and understanding and so forth. Mrs. Brown, sorry, I didn't mean to steal.
No, it's just, it's been really exciting to watch how, how we're making this paradigm shift. And, you know, the things that we need to put in place and that we have put in place to help us. I was actually just gonna move on because.
That would be good. So we do throughout this presentation, as we're revising steps, we do have some data for you just so you have an idea of where we've been, you know, in Panorama, iReady and some of the other software that we're able to use with our students.
Um, so one of the action steps mentioned the uh middle of the year and end of the year survey for students and their supportive relationships. Um so the way that this is reported is the percent favorable. So for example, if I was looking at challenging feelings, sixty percent of the kids actually present uh favorable. So it's not looking at the number of challenging feelings. It's the, the lesser number of challenging feelings. So if you look at um supportive relationships, eighty-eight percent of the kids um reported that they have an adult that they can go to um if they need support. And we actually went up two percentage points from the last time we did this survey. The other neat thing about this is that these questions are um asked of all of the students who use these, these survey tools all over the nation so they can actually norm it. And so as you can see uh across these, um even for our lower percentages, we're still at pretty high grow, uh percentiles compared to the rest of the United States. Um and then for six to twelve, um the supportive relationships also went up. And positive feelings and challenging feelings went down, meaning that students were reporting more challenging feelings and less positive. As we know, um how this, this pandemic has been affecting kids, especially uh tweens and teens. And yet, even though we went down a percentage point, we're still in the highest uh percentile bracket compared to the nation. So that's good. And we can really dig, drill down into the student level and see how kids are doing and, and really um provide supports for students who are not doing well socially, emotionally.
And one of our hopes is as we continue to expand um in-person learning, you know, when you look at something like emotional regulation, that when you're in person, you may start to build those skillsets um easier than when you're in a virtual environment.
Now, the next thing, supportive relationships, are they referring to school or just in general?
Mrs. Brown, you wanna answer or?
Yeah, so it's, it asks for if they have anyone at school and they also ask at home. So it, it's, you know, an, an adult in their lives. Um so our kids.
I'm happy to see these numbers because I look at it and I feel like, you know, the home situations, the school situations, with maybe even community situations with all these kids and that's the nice thing to say.
One of the nice things, um so we've always asked questions similar to that in our surveys that we've done of students. Now, and Mrs. Brown just mentioned this before, we can actually ask that question and see how we're doing from a national standpoint in terms of what percentile. Cause that is one of the key areas that we always wanna make sure that we're high. Now, we wanna be in the ninety percent or over, that students are feeling they are adults to whom they can go to help problem solve situations.
I'm assuming, assuming that data such as this could be used to then, going back to Greg's earlier point around expanded summer offering, um that data such as this could be used to potentially make decisions, building by building on the potential for expanded summer offerings and then based on, on the survey results, also which families might be prioritized in terms of opting into those types of offerings since we have the information, making sure that we're using it to then target specific types of programming and then certain students who would benefit most from it.
Definitely. And Panorama lets us drill down, like I said, and disaggregate the, the data so we can look at trends for subgroups as well.
Mrs. Brown, you wanna advance it?
Yeah, sorry, my, my mouse is going between two screens. Here we go.
So the next. So the next district's markle deals with making sure that we're consistently building our skills as educators to provide a 21st century learning environment for our students. And this year, actually, and Mr. Trullio, you mentioned this earlier, one of the silver linings of, I guess, having to reinvent and redevelop all that to do, or at least review everything you do, is that you're, you're learning new skills. And as we built the original schedules for a predominantly remote instructional model, we actually built in more collaborative time for staff and connection with families. And so we don't want to lose the skills that we started to develop this year, nor do we necessarily want to lose that collaborative piece. So that's going to be one of our, our goals as we build schedules for next year. And hopefully it's all schedules looking for in-person. But how do we build more collaborative time for our educators? And certainly the 10 days at the beginning of the year, that was due to something the commissioner did, which we were very thankful for. However, how do we build that just in our normal schedules in all the schools?
Did you want to say something before I go into these? All right, so. With that said, one of the things that was really successful was our ELPS University. And so we'll share some data around that. But those were self-paced courses that teachers could choose. And we started offering those over the summer, as you may recall, to just prepare teachers to utilize these tools. So on top of that, and having the time to, to work together, so much of this information was spread throughout just by teachers teaching other teachers, which is really exciting. We also offered around our equity audit work, professional development on anti-racist and culturally responsive teaching, as well as universal design for learning. And continue to support teachers around the personalized learning tools that we offer for students. And this year, we didn't want to cut back on any personalized learning tools because it was just such a strange year. So in some ways, we have a little too many and we might need to bring some back next year. And you'll see that with some of the usage data, depending on which personalized learning tools were favored. But again, we didn't want to take anything away from folks that they were used to in such a unique time. Let me bring that back over. And I'm going to show you this. Let's go and just skip this because. So these are some charts for our professional development. And the top rings are the ELPS University, which is still happening and teachers are still taking advantage of that. So green is likely and blue is very likely. So you can see that people felt like the content was relevant. They'll use the information and they're satisfied. Down below are some of the live professional developments we offered after the first 10 days. So the, our November date and then our January date. In January, we offered both live and self-paced professional development around preparing for teaching hybrid concurrently. And that went over well, for the most part. Folks seemed to like the live version better than the self-paced version. And then we also offered professional development, like I said, around anti-racism and really trying to look at how we can remove barriers in our, in our tier one instruction so that all kids can access the curriculum. And so you'll see that the, the ratings are a little bit different than the ELPS University. However, we got to think about the fact that when we're talking about race and implicit bias and stereotype threat, it's not very comfortable to talk about. And actually, when people are uncomfortable, that's actually a good thing. That means we're learning. But that also means that not everyone's always going to respond favorably to professional development. And, and there's always other factors as well, who the facilitator was. We brought in some people from outside. We had some great facilitators and some not great facilitators. But just a little explanation why that's a little bit more all over the place than the LPS University. And then in terms of personalized learning, on your slides, it says Lexia Math, but that's a typo. Lexia creates reading, Lexia Core 5. And our middle school uses the power up for their interventions. So this is the Core 5 that is used at Meadowbrook. And you can see that the blue is, the dark blue is above grade level material. The light blue is at grade level material and the gray is below. And so the start versus the current, all of the grades have grown. If you look over to the right, that's the usage. So the more usage, the more growth we tend to see. And so in addition to the offerings that Mr. Smith was talking about offering throughout the summer, Lexia will, will also continue to be available for rising second graders, rising first graders and rising third graders. So that's something that families can continue to take advantage of. Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, at the bottom, you can see how it's broken out kindergarten, first grade and second grade. And we're particularly excited about, we know what a struggle this, this year has been for families, but to see the growth that we're seeing, say, at the kindergarten level, where this has been their first experience, possibly in ELPS, and we are seeing some pretty significant growth.
And again, it's personalized, so it meets kids where they're at, which is the beauty of it. And same with iReady instruction. We have both the reading instruction and the math instruction available from grades three through eight. Even if I turn it off at a school, teachers can turn it back on. So it looks like some teachers are using it at Meadowbrook as well, which obviously is not a terrible thing, but I just wanted to point that out. If you look at the number of kids using it, it's 124 out of the entire school, which is 446. So here, we want to look at the number of lessons passed. This is, we'll go into the actual, the diagnostic data in a minute. So we want to have the average percentage of lessons passed at this point to be over 50 because we want them to do more than half of the year's lessons. So if you look at the average lessons passed, we're doing pretty well. And then if you go into the percent lessons passed year to date, they do break it into the number of kids who are at certain percentages. So for example, for Burchland Park, 70, 48% of the kids at Burchland Park have passed 70 to 100% of their lessons. And these lessons are directly correlated to their diagnostic score. We can override things if, if it doesn't seem to match. But iReady does place them based on how they did on the iReady reading, in this case, and the iReady math. And with the math, we're doing even better. We've got pretty high numbers here, 77% maple shade, sorry, over on the average lessons passed, 81% at maple shade, average lessons passed. So they're, they're tooling along in the iReady math instruction. And then finally, ST Math, which we have on a grant. And ST Math is the program that was created by a neuroscientist who also has dyslexia to really kind of minimize the language and focus on conceptual understanding. And then students do get algorithms and understand that connection, but they start off with the conceptual. So we're not using this as much, partly because it's competing with iReady. So they want about 90 minutes at three to five and 60 minutes at K through two. So Meadowbrook has been meeting their minutes. They're not competing with iReady, like third through fifth. The other thing is that until recently, ST Math wasn't as user-friendly. At this point now, for those of you familiar with iReady, you can actually shut off their journey, pause their journey and assign things based on standards. So they have a lot more features that are going to make this a lot more user-friendly for teachers in the future.
And that brings us to our goal around continuous learning and achievement. And one of our focus at the end of the year is to see that our students are continuing to grow and staying within that predominantly, within that typical growth range of 40 to 60%. We don't know how much accountability data we're going to be keeping state, but certainly using these personalized learning tools will help us monitor a little bit more frequently how we're doing throughout the year.
When you're comparing, for instance, the iReady, right? And I know you can't really compare cohorts, you know, second grader, second grader. But how do they look? Do these kids are doing now, like say, for instance, a group of second graders taking it this year? And of the percentage of people passing all that compared to the second graders, maybe even, I don't even know if last year would be fair or like the year before.
Yeah, I, I do have that. Gordon, do you want me to skip to that slide?
Okay, we'll get there. All right.
We could jump ahead.
No, I didn't do my homework, I'll admit.
No, no, that's fine. So just quickly, what we're trying to do is, you know, one, stay current with any revisions to the standards and make sure that our curriculum is following the, the standards approved by the state. And some of these personalized learning tools help us sort of drill down into those specific standards. And so that's really what this goal is talking about in terms of the action steps is how do we help our students build down in us? How do we allow ourselves to identify where students are challenged?
And to Mrs. Trullio's point, this will be really important information for us to look at as we're planning for next year, as we always do, but even more so in this, this kind of environment.
So one of the things that we have to continue to do throughout any given year, but we have to, certainly in a pandemic situation, we have to offer professional development, maybe smaller offerings around how to use these tools and how, probably most importantly, how to use the results that you're gaining and what we can do with them. And so those are things that we're talking about, not only with the leadership team, but we are hoping in smaller settings to provide professional development for our teachers around some of this.
And we're building leadership capacity in the MTSS teams to be able to lead this work as well.
And one of the things I talked about as part of the silver lining was this idea of how do we build more collaborative time for our teachers? Some of that we've achieved over the years through, say, negotiations. Some of that we've achieved through, say, changing the model, such as the middle school model allows for a lot of meeting time and collaboration. But we're looking to see how we can do more with it at the elementary level. And we have been working, it did get halted, but we had been working last year with the district management group or council. And we hope to resume that probably in the late spring.
Yeah, so this is for reading. And so we have 2020, 2021 up above and then 2019, 2020 in the bottom. And we assessed last year, just the beginning of the year and the middle of the year. And so we're really comparing the same things. We've so far only assessed in the beginning of the year and we, and we did one in January, February. So it's interesting to look at, these are the comparisons. But if you compare diagnostic two to diagnostic two, both the year previous and this year, we had 35% of our kids at mid-level or above grade level at this point. Last year, we had 27% kids on early on grade level, meaning they're, they're on grade level, but it's still kind of considered early in the year and compared to 25% this year. And then 28% are one grade level below then and 28% are one grade level below now. So even the two grade levels below is 8% compared to 6%. And then the three or more grade levels below is 5%. So I think it's pretty amazing what everyone has done in terms of, you know, we can always improve our growth, but if we're comparing, you know, regular times to pandemic times and still managing to, to get kids to learn and grow, it's, it's kudos to our amazing teachers.
I think that's pretty impressive, awesome.
And then I, we have some slides here just to give you, you know, not to study in depth right now, but these are this year's diagnostic two versus diagnostic one for each school. And you basically want the green to grow, the red to shrink and the yellow to shrink. And so you can see for every diagnostic two, that's the case for every school. And again, that the green with the stripes is mid-low, mid-grade, at this point, mid-grade level or above. Green is early grade level, yellow is one grade level below and red is two grade levels below and the red with the stripe is three grade levels below. So obviously, our goal is to get everyone to the green. And then these are our growth. And we talked about this last year. iReady does create cohorts, kind of like the MCAS does, where they match kids who place similarly at that grade level. And then they create targets for them. And so there's the typical growth, which is what kids normally, who place that way at that grade level, grow. And then they have stretch growth, which is how much they need to grow to get to proficiency. And so these growth targets are based on percentage points. So the, sorry, scale score points. So a kid who has, who starts out at early grade level would have a 25-point target, whereas those who are one grade level below would have 26 and 27. So you can see how, you know, the typical growth actually does go, kids do grow more when they're farther behind. And then the stretch growth is more ambitious. But we really do want to push for that stress, stretch growth because that's how kids actually fill that gap and catch up with their peers. And sometimes it takes more than a year, but they're attainable goals. And just so you get a comparison as well for math, math was similar. We had a little bit less in this case. We had 22% this year, mid or above grade level versus 24% last year and 27% at early on grade level and 31% last year, 39 both years percent. And we do have a little bit higher percentage of kids to grade levels below at 7% versus 4%. But still, these are really pretty close. And I forgot to say earlier that compared to the national norms, I didn't create a slide visual, but we're above the historical national, national norm or at the level. And what I mean by historical is how kids normally tested, not what they also looked at, how kids tested in this environment. So we're, we're doing well, even despite the pandemic. Did you want to say something, Mr. Smith? I'm sorry.
No, you, you got it.
This is the same thing for math for each school. You can see the green grows in each one. And you have it in your slide if you want to dig a little deeper. And same with the growth. So at this point, we do want the progress median to be around 50% because we want the kids to have grown, have reached halfway towards their target. So these numbers are close. They're a little bit behind. But again, according to the diagnostic scores, they're still growing, perhaps not as quickly as we want to. We also have this, the stretch growth is not happening as much this year. But these are all things that we're aware of. And that brings us to here, but before, I just wanted to make sure there are any questions. I can go back to any data slides.
I have a question for the iReady man. Is it, what grade level is it supposed to be moving? Like are, is it grade one through?
For the instruction or the diagnostic? Well, no, for the diagnostic, it's first grade through eighth grade. Next year will be kindergarten through eighth grade because Desi's pushed for an early universal screener. So our kindergartners will have it too, and it's actually developmentally appropriate for. So our kindergartners will have it too, and it's actually developmentally appropriate for kindergartners. The instruction that we purchased is third grade through eighth grade. However, some first and second graders are using iReady.
Just because the numbers for the students competing the lesson on that slide, it doesn't seem as many.
For Meadowbrook?
For Mountain View, Maple State, and Meadowbrook.
For reading or for math?
For math.
So math is competing with ST math. So right now, the kids are, have two different personalized tools. We didn't want to pull one away from them, but next year we will streamline so that their, their attention is not, you know, between two different personalized tools.
So then there's some students that were doing iReady, but they all took the diagnostic.
Everyone takes the diagnostic, yes.
But not everybody utilizes instruction.
Correct.
Right. So basically, that brings us back just to look at, you know, our three goals. Obviously, they're integral to each other and continuously work around that circle. Repeat the action steps hopefully to help all our students achieve to their highest possible level. With this presentation, I did include in your packets, my educator plan, there was obviously some revision. But before I go there, I don't know if there are questions? And basically, as our district's SMART goals go, my educator plan goes in a very similar fashion. So obviously, at the beginning of the year, we were very much looking like, how do we keep our educational programming going? How do we make sure that we're identifying the different challenges and finding appropriate solutions so that we can move not only our staff, but our students forward? And so really, there, there are three goals here. The team goal is still around the whole child and making sure that we're doing everything we can within this unique year to make sure that our students are growing academically, socially, and emotionally. But then with that, I have two integral individual goals, one of which is very much needed. And we highlighted a couple of times during this meeting is that we're interconnected with a number of departments. And we want to make sure that those relationships are good relationships and working to make sure that both departments feel like it's a relationship that continues to get better and make progress. And one of which obviously is the IT department, another which will be mentioned tonight is the Department of Public Works. But certainly without some of these partnerships, this year would have been even more challenging. And so that's something that I've been focusing on, not only this earlier in the year, but certainly we'll continue to focus on. And the second individual goal is to hopefully navigate us successfully through the eligibility period with the Mass School Building Authority. And hopefully by the turn of the fiscal year, have a funding agreement with them to do a feasibility study. There are eight requirements that have to be completed to finish your eligibility period. And we have completed six of them and we're working on seven, which is the maintenance and capital planning. And then work with all of you, town council, town manager, to do the final one, which is to appropriate the money for funding a feasibility study. And with that vote, we would then send that to the Mass School Building Authority Board. They would approve sending a funding agreement and then we would be into the next stage, which is actually the eligibility step.
What's the timeline on that? Because I know COVID threw up.
Well, we were asked, if you remember, the town had asked us to sort of move back the eligibility and it made sense.
Right.
So originally, we were starting in June with some of our first requirements, but we moved it back to October. So we have until June thirtieth to finalize everything.
Of this year.
Okay. So we should be well on our way. The next big item, as I said, is the maintenance and capital planning, working with Bruce Penny and Joe Dunn to complete that in their portal. And then we send that, once you hit submit in the portal, and it's almost like a Desi-coordinated program review, then it all populates and goes to them for their review. So we're working on that now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, question, any other questions? Should we look for a motion for revised action steps and portals and either evaluation?
Sure, educator plan.
Sure.
Yep. I'm trying to read, I'm trying to get the language right. So just the revised action steps, the SMART goals.
Okay, move to approve the revised action steps to the SMART goals, including the superintendent's self-directed growth.
Yes, it's just an educator.
Educator plan.
Yep. As presented, as presented. Motion made by Bill. Second by that discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The carries five to zero.
Mr. Brown, thank you.
Thanks, Heather. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. Okay, we have a few donations. Mrs. Blair, if you want to go through those.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So in your packet, there's a request from Mountain View principal, Mrs. Santinello, for school committee to approve a five hundred dollar sign-on bonus check from Gryn and Barrett. This will be deposited into the Mountain View gift account for future benefit to the students.
I move to accept the five hundred dollar check from Gryn and Barrett. Do you put it into the Mountain View student fund account?
Gift account.
Gift account.
Motion made by Beth. Second by Santinello, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
And the next item, there is a request from high school principal, Mr. Page, for the school committee to accept a one hundred dollar donation from the Correa family for the two thousand twenty-one graduate Rees-Keway for one standard brick for the Spartan Walkway. Again, these funds will be deposited into the high school gift account for future use.
I move to accept the one hundred dollar check from the Correa family for the two thousand twenty-one graduate Rees-Keway for the Spartan Walkway.
Motion made by Beth. Second by Sarah, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The carries five to zero as well. Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome. Thank you. I'll get those deposited for you.
Okay, and then our last item for this evening, we have a discussion on the school choice program for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year.
Okay, thank you. So as you know, last year, the school committee around this time voted to, actually, it was a little bit later, voted to participate this year in the school choice program. And so we brought in ten school choice students at the sixth grade level and five at the ninth grade level. And so far, given the incredibly unique year we're having, we have all our students still enrolled. They seem to be doing well. And so this is a discussion of where do we go from here? Just to give you some information, one of the charts that Desi provides through their school finance portal is it takes a look at how schools are either receiving or receiving and sending school choice. Because obviously, with taking in school choice students, there is a certain amount of funding that follows that student. And so this one goes back to fiscal year twelve. You can see that East Long Meadow goes up and down when we were not participating in school choice. We do have students that choice, so to speak, choice out of the district. Some of that can be traced back to possibly parents who are working in another school district. And so children go with that parent, but some of it is just literally, to use the name, a choice. They have applied, that family has made a decision, they've applied to a district offering choice slots, and now they've gotten in. So if you look at FY twenty-one, which is all the way over to the right, you can see that we now have twenty-one students going out to other districts, and we have fifteen students coming.
I'm sorry. How do we get a percentage of a, of a student? Why is it twenty point two, thirteen point six? Where, where you look on the, every other year except for this year, it's an odd number.
Oh, that's a good point.
Every part, it can't be part of the year, can it?
Mrs. Blair, you, you know how in the years that, where we were not participating in the middle there, FY seventeen, FY eighteen, FY nineteen, we actually have a point something?
I think it must have to do with just, it's prorated to a portion of the year, it must not have been a full year.
You can have choice students leave.
I say, in the middle of the year?
In the middle of the year.
And go back.
And go back.
Okay.
Well, that would be our students, though.
Well, theirs can leave too, though.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, we've only ever just started.
Oh, you mean ours will come back?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, yes.
I think the bigger question, because we're discussing where we go on, is why is there a period of time and what we're moving in for? Particularly in our district, that's what needs to be fixed before we're letting others in. But I'll let you go.
Okay, thanks. So the, the second page of the information for school choice just gives you an idea of the sending districts who have come in with the fifteen choice slots. And-
Can I ask a question on that?
Absolutely.
The tuition amount for the first three schools is less per pupil than for the fourth sending district? I was going to flip it the other way, say, is it more?
So you, you actually get additional funding if a student has IEP services.
Okay, thank you.
So in some cases, we have students or students in that group.
Understood.
That's something that school choice has all done in a lottery fashion. So it's not something that we can select or not select. We're participating and students get selected in that lottery, they're in.
And the students that are paying more are taking the spots from the thinly spread services that we have, OT, you know, speech and all this stuff, those kids are coming in and the little bit that they're paying is helping us enough to purchase a new employee.
A new what?
A unemployed, it's all those spots. You know, we're having trouble getting some kids getting services because our staff is stretched so thin. And now we're having students come from other school systems that are taking those spots. And they deserve those spots because they're ours now.
So I think one, one of the reasons why we looked at specific grade levels was to make sure that we were doing this in a cautious and very planful way. So last year, we only brought in students in sixth and ninth.
Yeah.
So I think some of the things that we were talking about earlier really are at the lower elementary grades.
Yeah, but you still don't, I don't mean to interrupt, but you still don't know what you're going to end up with.
No, you don't.
And this, you know, bluntly, it's a losing proposition because we're getting five thousand dollars and we're spending a whole lot more to educate across the board. I, I understand what.
I don't know that we're spending more across the board.
We're spending more than five thousand dollars.
There's somebody from one of those districts.
I don't think we added any staff members and we added fifteen students.
Yes, you added fifteen students, but some of those students, and I don't know if it's one or two or twelve, okay? Are taking a spot in the speech person.
I, I don't think we're not meeting anyone's, anyone's needs, though.
I don't know, there's people that are waiting to get compensatory services on things that-
I think you're talking about two different grade levels.
It doesn't matter. If, if, y'all know how I feel about this. People are paying the taxes that they pay in this town. I feel that it takes away, I understand the reason behind it. I, I think that it's not fair to the people who pay the taxes in this town, that people who necessarily maybe chose for whatever reasons to live elsewhere can come in and, you know, take up space. I think that I would be upset if I was a parent and my child had to wait in line for something. Okay, I know that you've picked very specific based on low numbers and certain grades and stuff like that. I feel like we own these kids now. I feel like if anything, their syndrome should come in and let me just close it down. Because I just don't think it's, I think it's also sets a precedent. I think at some point when it becomes, you all know, I left one year, what happens? Look what happens. I mean, really. And I'm not saying these are the most amazing, wonderful, fantastic, pleasant, lovely kids in the world, okay? But the fact of the matter is, I don't think that the little bit that the state gives us, and I would turn around and say, and I, I don't even want to get into what schools we're dealing with here. Why did these numbers go up? What, what are we doing that's making twenty kids leave our district or twenty-one kids? I know some kids want to go to private schools or public schools or whatever they may be. But, you know, we went from twenty, from twenty-twelve at nine, seven percent, four percent, seven percent up, or not percent, kids, up to twenty kids, twenty-one kids. And that's telling to me. And I think that we need to figure out what this problem is before we start letting other kids in. So that's mine, Bill, you all know how I feel.
Yeah, and so conversely, though, it does, I feel, add diversity to the student body. It gives opportunity for students, if we have the space, to fill some of the classrooms that are smaller numbers. If you look at five per se in a grade level, then every other class basically gets one more student. We could look at it that way, right? And it does bring in some revenue to the district. If you look at last year, about a hundred thousand dollars, so, you know.
And then we're going to be dependent on that. And then we're going to have to keep bringing kids in. And then the town council is going to say, oh, you've got that.
But that, but that helps the taxpayer, though, versus not helping the taxpayer.
It does not help the taxpayer. You know that ultimately, it costs more than five thousand dollars.
It doesn't, no. It's a misnomer. By bringing in fifteen students in classes that are low in numbers, we are not adding any more staff, but we are taking the revenue for those students.
We are not going to get back any special education money. They're never going to pay us for the ultimate process. They can't, it's just-
Well, I don't think, I don't think we can say that fairly because I think we don't necessarily have additional cost for these students.
Right.
Anyone, even the special ed students.
Business, you know, like breaking it down to that point, I mean, because that's been your-
Pam, do they have to make a circuit breaker to, to increase that from five thousand? Is that the criteria? Pam?
Ask that question again, I don't think I'm understanding you.
So the students on the fourth and the, in the largest sending district, they, they have a higher tuition amount. And I know it's not average, it's some are more than others. But if we receive more than the five thousand dollars, is that relative to the circuit breaker funding for that specific student that's, we're receiving?
I don't think so, Greg.
Okay.
I think school choice is school choice. It's that five thousand dollar amount.
Yeah.
Per student, and then there's a special ed component on that. And those funds do go into a revolving account that is controlled by the school committee. So for all, you know, for many, many years, we've had no funding in, in there. This year, we, we have eighty-nine thousand dollars that will be coming into the district. My hope as your business manager is that we would be able to gradually grow that fund a little bit so that we've got a little bit of a safe haven, so to speak. So if something were to happen, like what happened last year where we had an influx of, of special ed tuitions that, that occurred, you know, a lot of districts have this little bit of balance sitting there, which is very, very helpful. And that would be my hope for, for this district to be able to do.
Yeah, and so my question, Pam, was what, more so, how do they, how is that calculated for special ed additional funding? How, how was that calculated?
I don't know the exact amounts. I think it's the type of special ed services that qualifies for a certain amount. I can certainly find, you know, more information out about that for you.
And do you know, is it a fair statement that I made that we didn't necessarily add staff due to these fifteen students specifically?
That is a fair statement to say.
Okay, so that's fine for this year.
So if I may add to that answer, though, we, if we were to, just like any other student- So, if I may add to that answer, though, um, we, if we were to, just like any other student um to go to circuit breaker, if the spending that we're doing as a district meets the foundation spending, then yes, we can file.
Also apply for circuit breaker funding for students that we take in.
Right.
Some child or multiple children from one specific district come in and they're automatically, we're getting more money for those students. Those students are requiring something additional than your regular run-of-the-mill kid is. Who is doing that for them? Is it a person?
Generally, if you have students on IEP, you're going to have a liaison. Um, and then that that um special educator is working closely with the student and certainly the family to provide services, but in.
And those services are coming from one of our employees.
That's right.
That are getting, and this is a different year, because I understand it's a different year. Those services are coming from one of our employees. That employee has so many kids that they got lined up, and now we're gonna add another one. And are they doing enough for the kids they already have before we add another one or two, because I don't know?
I mean, we don't know. Yeah, that's another question that I can answer, yeah.
But we're gonna find a circuit breaker if it's an exorbitant amount.
Right.
We have a balance because we build it up over time, so I think also that balance could be used specifically for those years, but I don't think it becomes an issue, because if the sending district provides funding for special education, which clearly they're doing based on on this document, and we can apply for circuit breaker if it's an absor- absorbent amount, then the funding is covered. And if there's not staff.
Sorry, I was just gonna remind you all that for the circuit breaker, um, in order to qualify for the circuit breaker, it's fo- it it's anything over four times the per pupil, the foundation per pupil amount, which I think equates to about, I think last year it was forty five thousand and this year about forty eight thousand dollars. So the only monies that can go for circuit breaker reimbursement is those funds that go above that amount. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's forty eight hundred, right?
About forty eight thousand.
It is thousand.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
Significant amount of spending.
Yep.
You know how I feel.
Hey, you laughed, Beth.
I laughed, I laughed.
What's, okay, what's the recommendation?
So that the leadership team is um uniform in recommending staying with school choice. They would look again at the sort of the entry grades of the different schools. So um, you know, you could add easily five to grade six next year. You could add five to grade nine, um where you have a hundred and eighty seven students. We do expect our numbers to grow a little bit, because we do expect students to come back that may have left and gone to other um either parochial schools or other schools, um possibly choice.
Do we not think that maybe we just want to get through the rest of, I don't even know why this got passed last year, because of what was happening around us? I, of all years, do we want to maybe get our kids back in and see what's happening? And think about letting the siblings of these children that are already here in.
Beth, you can't.
You can't let the siblings, yeah.
The only way we can let them in is so, say we offer five in ninth, five in sixth.
Yeah.
And maybe Maple Shade also. If a s- a sibling of one of the, these fifteen students happens to be in fifth or it's Maple Shade, sixth or ninth, right? So we can't say, all right, out of these fifteen, we have to designate the spots first.
Right.
Open them up.
I'm saying if we have spots available, they obviously are the first ones to come in.
But only if they're going into that grade level.
Well.
Right.
I mean.
You guys do it every year for that to actually work, I think, and offer it staggered. Because unless you open up to every grade level, then there's only a window, right? So if the chances of the siblings meeting that window will happen over time.
And try to invite them in, and but then I don't know, what's what's legality about, oh, you're picking and choosing all in one.
You can't pick them, though.
You can't do it that way.
Yeah.
You have to designate, at, if if you're choosing to participate, this um body designates where the slots are going to be. And then if that matches up with the siblings, then they should get first um option on that.
We talked about Maple Shade as well, is there a recommendation from Maple Shade?
So uh, Mr. Brett did say that um he could at the um third grade level take five or even seven uh at Maple Shade.
I mean, I I specifically mean on the diversity aspect of it, because we take kids in from other districts, from other uh statuses and like.
They've been met for years.
But let's even diversify more, though, Beth, you know?
I understand it's only one group of people, but um.
We have, i- 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 it comes down to space, I'm with you that if it, if it takes away services from our students, then we shouldn't be doing it. But be, by specifically picking classes that are small and bringing them up to the size of others and not even necessarily, then if we've got the empty desks, there's no additional staff or.
You don't know what you're gonna get, you don't know.
No, of course not, but funding follows.
Into the town and they come in, you don't know what we're gonna get, but they moved into the town.
Right.
You know what I'm saying, and then, and I just think that, and I think this year coming up especially, just everything that's gonna be happening, try. We got, what, how many more kids, we gotta fit in, twelve, we got fifteen more kids, we had to figure out how to. Get into our schools this year.
No, but we have the space, that's why we're, we're picking the grades that are small.
Shoehorning kids in a COVID.
Oh, now?
Yes.
But COVID's over, Beth, didn't you get the memo?
I know, I got it, I got it. That's why we're done, we're good to go.
I mean, anyways, I just, I have not historically been a huge proponent of school choice, like I I haven't. But I have to say, one of the things that has has started to sway me a little bit is how well the students who did have the opportunity, how well the students who came in this year have done so far. Um, makes you, makes you wanna see.
Because I know nothing about them or or how they came in or what.
I think that's what Heather, Heather had alluded to.
I know that she's saying that they're doing well, but I I understand that.
We really can't go into their.
Exactly, and I know from the standpoint of educators are fantastic administrators. I understand why they want this. I get it, it might even be the right thing to do. But I, I think that from the standpoint as a, as a town and and the funding thought process of them saying, oh, well, you've got, oh, look at, you've got eighty thousand in this year, and oh, you're gonna, oh, now you've got a hundred and sixty, and oh, and then you've got that, and then I'm gonna, oh, well, we don't need to give you that.
You let me worry about that.
Because you've got that money sitting in an account, right?
And there's potential, the potential risk we take.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd be willing to see it go forward one more year in a tradition, in more of a traditional setting to get a sense of impact.
I think maybe the the year after, I just, I see it where I am right now, and it is, it is a budget necessity. It's a budget necessity.
It's different in a regional school district as opposed to where we are, it's always been that way.
Well, I understand that.
Because they get different funding sources. Okay, they look at transportation reimbursement, they, every regional district that I know of always over budgets for regional transportation reimbursement.
Yeah.
And they're scrambling when that gets cut. And that's, that's the reality of why they need that money.
Right. So I guess that's what I'm, I'm afraid of getting ourselves, you know, try these kids out, see how it goes, you know, maybe, you know, I I just think that we should try to get through this year. It'll build up a little stockpile of money that we might need for something and and see how it goes. I just think that um I I I just think the long term, we're gonna find it's something that we're gonna, it it's just gonna be a albatross. So. That's it, listen.
Okay, good discussion. Um, so we have a recommendation for um participating in school choice for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. We would look to potentially add five students to uh, what grade, Maple Shade, third?
So five students at grade three, five students at grade six, and five students at grade nine.
So that means our, so just so that we're clear, that's looking at our exiting second graders. Just that we're all looking at the right numbers.
We have a hundred and fifty two.
Hundred and fifty two. Our exiting fifth graders, which sits at a hundred and ninety.
Correct.
And our exiting eighth graders, which sits at a hundred and eighty seven.
Right.
Yeah.
So when you're thinking about that in terms of relative class size.
We're at two eighteen and tenth, two oh four and seven.
Right.
Okay.
The high school classes have over the last few years generally averaged over two hundred students. Um, but as you can see, twelfth grade's at one seventy one, and um the incoming eighth grade is one eighty seven. I do think we'll see some of our students return, uh that may have gone to parochial schools. And so, you know, I think ninth grade will bump up a little bit next year.
But even with the additional five seats, that would, that would still position us to be below two hundred students coming into our ninth grade.
Right. And and the building originally was built for close to a thousand students.
Yeah, that's enough to keep in mind, these kids are coming in. How are they testing? When you get fifteen, you know, you break it up and it's kind of a big clump in each group. However, if they're not testing well, our M-PASS gets hit. All right, and it's gonna take us a year or two to catch those kids up with us. And then, and then when we're looking at the numbers, our teachers are like, okay, are they gonna get pointed at that you haven't done your job right? Because the numbers are down? When really, in 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 theory, it might just be the teaching styles are different, or um the the kids have just come from a situation where they, they haven't been able to function in whatever school they're in, for good, for bad, you know, for whatever reasons. And now those choices, when we come and we do our demographics, are gonna change what numbers we get potentially back from um our, our M-PASS testing, because that's the big one, and they're all looking at it. And if we don't meet those benchmarks these couple of years, we don't know what's happening now, those get affected too.
Yeah, but what if we get kids that score really high?
I, I would rather, yeah, but what if we don't? Like, okay, let's see, because we have some students, all right, that are already coming in that are costing more money for their upcoming plans.
I think that we have really great teachers that would be able to support the kids and close them down.
We have really good teachers, well. They wouldn't want to come here. You know what I'm saying, I'd like to think that people would like to, and and it's not like we're an exclusive club, but the fact of the matter is, the people are paying the taxes. And it's it's got nothing to do with other than that. I think that we we shouldn't crowd out a class, and I know usually you've got a lot of space, you know, but we've got people are buying houses like there's no tomorrow out there, they cannot keep them on. Uh, do we even know what's gonna be happening with kindergarten and students coming in? It's that you can't even keep a house in the market right now. I mean, we have to look forward like that, too. They've moved out of cities, they moved from all over the place, they're moving into towns around here. Is that gonna affect us moving into the upcoming fall?
I I think we'll rebound, I mean, we're down quite a bit, you know, as a total district, we're at twenty three ninety two compared to being at over twenty five hundred last year at this time. So I, yeah, I do think we'll rebound, um which is why our recommendations are um very low in terms of numbers, you know, five, five, and five. Um, and to your point, we, when we get into a discussion um as a leadership team, we never really target kindergarten because we know that even with the best knowledge that um, you know, predicts what we may get, we've had years and you can see it.
Look what happened a couple of years ago when.
Yeah, where we had, uh, if you look last year, um, you know, we had a hundred and seventy nine. Uh, and we were, we were used to seeing kindergarten classes in the one sixties.
I know, my kids sat in radiators.
Right, so.
Okay, for my kids' class, and I was okay with my kids sitting on the radiator, we'd be right over. And I know that the numbers are down, I see that, but at the same time, I think, I look at, okay, so you're thinking of putting some kids that are gonna be going in coming into third grade. And we've never done any testing, they're gonna come in, it's the first year for M-PASS after a pandemic. We don't want to go that way, we really want to do that to our staff members? Like, like some staff members in in third grade are gonna, you know what I'm saying? I I would just think that for slightly different reasons, I I do hesitate to think about adding students into third.
Um, I I'm more inclined to consider sixth and ninth. I think that for a variety of reasons, that those might be um some, some better spots, just based on the size of the buildings, as you just alluded to, um Gordon. That, you know, our high school is meant to have over a thousand students in it, and right now we're sitting far below that. Um, so thinking about about locations such as that and the same with with Berchland. And I just think like we've, we've, those teachers have experienced it, though, even though it was remote or hybrid, they've experienced um welcoming students in, and there are, and that that might be a better fit going into next year to see, because then at least we're able to kind of have a a point of comparison with what we somewhat experienced this year. Rather than going further into to elementary school. Since this is a decision we make every year.
It is, I I just think, you know, we should get to, get to know these kids in person, see what's happening, you know, I I don't know, I just um I was just really surprised, I understand we have this session every year. I understand it's it's something we've discussed and we've thought about and we volley back and forth about. I just personally was really surprised last year of everything happening that we even touched upon it. Um, a- and I just think that we owe the kids that we have in this town right now our hundred percent attention and bring it back in the spring of next year and and see, let's just see what's happening first. There's so much happening, we're asking our teachers to switch off and on, we're asking our kids to be in, to be out, and then to be hybrid, and then to be in, and we're at, we're thinking about extending or, you know, offering extended services and and school for kids, it's just, just seems like it's a lot.
I won't disagree with you, there is a lot. We have, I think all, all school systems have done a lot this year.
Yeah, it's been, it's been stressful on everybody.
And how many of some of these kids that might, might get pulled in and come in and get larger, haven't been in school at all on any level yet this year? Oh, I'm like.
So let's help them. What's your proposal, five in five, six in nine?
I I I mean, if I, if we're gonna go forward with it, then I would feel more comfortable doing five in five at grade six and grade nine. So at least then, if we go forward into next academic year, we have, we can say in good faith that we've looked at the same two grade levels for two consecutive years, and we've been able to make a stronger decision possibly in the third year based on what we're seeing. Rather than trying to expand into other grade levels, I'd feel more comfortable, which is a long way for me to come, like, again, I was not I was not a huge proponent of this, but I think based on what we've gathered in terms of experience in a very challenging year from both the administrators, the teachers, and the students who have, who have experienced school choice this year, that we at least give it one more opportunity, and then we have, have some, some data relative to two years to see is this worth continuing, or is this something that we just continue based on, you know, cost benefit analysis at that point?
I don't know, I guess I just think that in the nine years plus one, that I've been on this committee, I have never once had a parent say, come on, let them in. You know what I mean, I've had parents be very vocal that they don't, that that they just feel, you know, people pick the communities they pick and that they feel that it it will take away from whatever.
I think we also have to look at enrollment, Beth, like we've, we're, we're on a slippery slope too with enrollment and what we're trying to achieve long term.
Think this is not the year, this right, like, last year and this year, it's just that, maybe next year when things are normal. I may even open up my mind to it a little bit, but.
Who knows what normal looks like next year?
Well, I I I know that.
It's really.
You know.
Uh, yeah, I understand everybody's viewpoints and and I've always been concerned, but.
I just think putting them into third grade is just beyond.
Well, no, that's why.
I think the greatest is, is where we go.
Yeah, all right, how about this? I'll move that we open school choice, five slots to grade six, five slots through to grade nine for school year twenty one, twenty two.
Okay.
Okay, motion is made by Bill.
A second.
Seconded by Sarah, any other discussion?
So that's ten slots.
Correct, ten slots.
Total between two grade levels, five and five.
Five at six, five at nine.
I mean, I understand what what Michael was looking in third grade.
Yeah.
But to your point, Sarah, I agree with you, okay, on how we look at this and going forward next year.
And I agree with much of what Beth is saying.
Right.
I just, I think in order for us to try to get a good read on what what we're doing and how we're planning moving forward, that we at least try to.
Next year's not gonna give us a normal, it's not gonna be normal.
Right, but then we revisit again next year and see what, see how things are, just, I mean.
Well, it's not like these kids are gonna like bite anybody's head off, they're good kids, they're just coming in here for, and it's a fantastic opportunity, and it's great. I'm just talking about, you know, we need to be careful, um, I, like I say, I see and I have no idea. First, we're gonna have a little chit chat about why these numbers are up regardless of COVID, because I'm curious. And secondly, I just um, all right.
Okay, uh, here, no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries four to one, so we will have school choice for five students in grade nine, five students in grade six for next school year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good discussion, thank you all. And with that, we have reached the conclusion of our March twenty second meeting. There is nothing else to discuss, I would entertain a motion to. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion made by Bill.
A second.
Second by Beth, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries five to zero, wanna thank everybody tonight and uh, have a great evening.